I'd like to call to order the regularly scheduled meeting in the Beloit City Council. It is Monday, November 16th at 7:02 PM. We have the call to order, so the roll call.
Councilors Kincaid and Lukey are absent; there are five presence. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Item two is Pledge of Allegiance. Will you all please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three is Special Orders of the Day and Announcements. Item 3A.
Is a presentation of the Wisconsin Park and Recreation Association 2015 Silver Star Award to the Parks and Leisure Services Division for the Beloit Dirty Dash.
Mr. Boyson.
For the second consecutive year, our Parks and Leisure Services Division has been recognized with a Silver Star Award by the Wisconsin Parks and Recreation Association, this year for the 2015 Beloit Dirty Dash event. The event exceeded all original goals and the, with eventually having 340 participants with nearly 1,000 people visiting Big Hill Park that day. It's been noted that this may have been the largest event in Big Hill Park since the era of the ski jumping events many years ago. So congratulations to the Parks and Recreation staff that organized and coordinated the special event, Recreation Coordinator Sonia Batten, Recreation Supervisor Spencer Waite, Park Supervisor Mark Edwards, and also I'd like to recognize and express appreciation to Brian Ramsey for his overall oversight of the program. So with that, this is a wonderful award that the staff picked up at the association meeting the week before last. And were there any other, Spencer, did you want to make a few more comments about the event?
We give you some applause first. You're awesome. Yay. We've got that two years in a row. That's impressive.
We're working on three.
Okay.
Anyways, we have a small little video that we've had our staff put together. One, it's going to make an announcement of the date for next year, but also just shows you the workings of the Beloit Dirty Dash if you're not aware of what it was or when it was. So enjoy.
Can I ready? [screaming] Ready? [screaming] 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 [screaming]
Well, that was a little snippet of what everybody enjoyed this summer, the kids anyways. Like Greg said, it is probably one of the largest events in Big Hill Park, you know, since the ski jump area. Basically, there's a lot of thank yous that need to go out. First and foremost is to Sonia. She put a lot of blood, sweat, and tears into this event, and it's paid off with not only the response by the community, but by the award from our state association as well. Then I'll need to thank our Parks Department, obviously. Without them, we wouldn't have been able to build and construct some of the obstacles that were out there. They're already planning, as well as we are, but the different things that they can do out there for next year as well. And then all of our volunteers that we had, I think we had over 60-plus volunteers. Coordination of that in itself is quite a handful, but for them to step up and be available on a Saturday morning and help us out the way they did was great. Our sponsors obviously made it happen as well. And, you know, we just look forward to another great event next year. You know, when we initially set out to do this, we were hoping for 150. As you can see, we eclipsed that, and hopefully this year, we're going to shoot for a modest 800 is what we're hoping for this year. So again, thank you guys for bringing us down here and letting us toot our horn, and we look forward to doing it again next year.
Yeah.
Thank you. Right. Item four is Public Hearings. We have three on this tonight. They'll all be handled under one staff report, and then I will give you a caveat after we've had heard the report. Oh, go ahead.
The first is a proposed ordinance amending the future land use map in the city of Beloit. Comprehensive plan to change the future land use designation for the property located at 1633 Keeler Avenue from institutional and community services to mixed residential.
Right. Madam Director, you may feel free to talk about all three of them at the same time.
So I'm going to be brief. Early last week, after the council package deadline, we received a revised concept plan from the developer, which does include those condo units that were added to it, and so the current proposal includes just rehabbing the existing COLAC center for 33 housing units. Because that did not get reviewed by Plan Commission, that specific concept plan, we would recommend that you refer it back to Plan Commission for their review and consideration. This development does require three steps, which is the approval of the PUD plan, the Comprehensive Plan Amendment to Change the Future Land Use Plan from Institutional and Community Services to Mixed Residential, as well as a actual rezoning to Planned Unit Development District. Just because this has changed somewhat, and Plan Commission did kind of beat up the last plan with a few more units, we thought it only right to send that back so that the Plan Commission gets to review the same thing you review. If you do refer it back to Plan Commission, it would go back to Plan Commission on December 9th for a public hearing, and then back to this body on December 21st for a public hearing. So that is what staff is recommending at this time.
Right. Thank you.
But you do, because these were noticed as public hearings, you do need to hold all three public hearings on the three separate items this evening.
Right. Before I open the public hearing, I think, looking at my fellow councilors, are we in broad agreement that we're going to be sending this back? All right. So before I open the public hearing, I want everybody, I'm very glad that everyone showed up for this. It's nice to know that you're involved, that you're interested, and that, you know, you sounds like you're, many of you will probably be in agreement with the Plan Commission on this thing. But if we're referring this back because of the revision, we're not going to shortcut the process. So the applicant will get a chance to show this, show a revised plan to our Plan Commission. And if you've, if you really wish to speak at this, at this public hearing, so you can feel free to do so, but I would recommend that you get a chance to review the new plan and then come back before us when it comes back, back to us on the 21st of December. So now, before I open this up, I wanted several people to know that you did, I did get a number of signup sheets, which were normally used for the citizens' participation portion of the agenda, and you won't need those for, for the public hearings. That being said, if you filled one of these things out when I opened the public hearings, you can either wait to address us on the 21st, or you can come forward and speak at this time, not, not later. So first things first, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on item 4A. Anyone wishing to speak on item 4A, at this time, you can come forward and speak to us, or you, we can deal with this on the 21st. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak on item 4A as presently shown.
Hello. My name is Tom Brooks. I live at 1221 La South Street, and I had prepared remarks, assuming that this was going to be in an item tonight. And I did just want to, so I'm not going to address those remarks, but I did want to say that I think one of the things that would help the neighborhood understand what the developer is trying to do is if the plans that are brought forward, they have changed a number of times over the last few months, unfortunately, at the very last minute. But if those plans had some more detail that would show what they're exactly planning to do versus just a basic number of units, and we really don't understand what they're trying to do, and it's changed a lot, so that would help us a lot when we come back to discuss this again.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to come forward and speak on item 4A? Do you wish?
Okay. Please.
You're welcome to.
Yes, by all means.
I hope I'm teaching by example, not anecdotal, but we have students here, and I'm just saying that with this change in the proposal and so forth, it strikes me as a classroom situation and as a teacher. I have been in the situation where you assign a homework assignment, work to do, and you groan and you moan, which we have all groaned and moaned about this proposal as neighborhood people. Then the teacher instructor tells you, "Well, it's not going to be that much. You've done, this is what we've, I've thought about it, and you don't have to do that much." Some of you are going to be grateful. The bottom line is, you still have this work to do. The bottom line is, we still have this building being proposed, coming into our area, and the neighbors, the taxpayers, as well as the voters, are not happy about this being brought forth in a residential area. And on behalf of the Police Department, if I might speak for them, as the Neighborhood Watch Captain, Keeler Avenue is a very high-traffic area for them from Park Avenue all the way, the full length of it, and, you know, they just do such a wonderful job in adding congestion to this area. I, it just seems like an impossible thing. I wish I had input from the Police Department on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else wishing to come forward and speak on item 4A?
Hello. Hello. My name is Peter Herrer. I live at 1210 Evergreen Avenue. My family's been at this address for 55 years. I just want to say that this is the third meeting I've attended to express my utter unhappiness with this proposal, and I will attend every meeting I have to, to keep up that effort.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
My name is Trudy Bell.
Oh, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Let me get, let me get you to.
1223 Partridge. The house is more smaller than my voice is. I am definitely on the side of the people that are against any multi-unit complex things where the COLAC building is of any size, not 33, not 32, not any little number. It would change our lives. We've, many of us have lived, as you just heard, lived in this neighborhood for very long periods of time, some 10 years, some 20 years, 30 years, 40 years, 50 years, 55, 60 years. And our long-term residence has helped to stabilize the neighborhood. We raised our children there, maintained our properties. I feel that, my personal feeling is that to increase the population density would take away the kind of stabilization that we've been able to help establish. We all own our own single-family homes. We've all been paying property taxes, taxes decade after decade after decade. People have worked very hard to get signatures for the petitions, and when they were told that they had to have, some people's signatures be notarized, they drove people to a notary because this is just so important to our area. I guess I just want to let you know, we feel we've done everything we can to let you know that we're not in favor of the COLAC project in any form. Thank you for your attention.
All right. Do we have any other persons wishing to come forward and speak on item 4A?
My name is Mike Carney, and I live at 1226 Evergreen. And many of the comments I would have made tonight, I will hold for later. But I want to bring up one thing. At the very first meeting, we were told by this organization that they had to have that many units to make this work. Then they changed it. Now they changed it again. What kind of story are they telling us? I will ask them when I see them again, too, but I just think you need to know, we were told right up front at the beginning that they had to have so many units, or they could not present this to the city. And now they're cutting way, way back. I don't know what's going on, but I'll ask them when I see them again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other persons wishing to come forward and speak on item 4A? Second call for persons to come forward and speak on item 4A. Third and final call for persons to come forward and speak on item 4A. I'll close the public hearing on item 4A. Do I have a motion to refer this back to plan?
So moved.
Moved by Sloniker, second by Hendricks. All in favor of referring this back to plan, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Item passes 5-0. I'll open the public hearing on item 4B. Go ahead and.
It's a resolution authorizing a planned unit development master land use plan for property located at 1633 Keeler Avenue.
This is being handled as a separate public hearing because it has to, but it's the same matter. So anyone who has additional comments to come forward and speak on item 4B, please do so at this time. Second call for persons to come forward and speak on item 4B. Third and final call for persons to come forward and speak on item 4B. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on item 4B. Do I have a motion to refer back to plan?
So moved.
Moved by Hendricks and second by DeForest. All in favor of referring this back to plan, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Item passes 5-0. Again, the final matter on this is item 4C.
The proposed ordinance amending the zoning district map to change the zoning district classification from public lands and institution district to planned unit development district for property located at 1633 Keeler.
This is also the same matter. I'll call forward, anyone wishing to speak on item 4C, please approach the podium and state your name and address. Second call for persons to come forward and speak on item 4C. Third and final call for persons to come forward and speak on item 4C.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. I'll close the public hearing on item 4C. Do we have a motion to refer back to plan?
So moved.
Moved by, moved by Kelly, second by Sloniker. Did you, did you want to add, say this now before we take the vote, or?
After.
Okay. All in favor of sending this back to plan, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Item passes by a vote of 5 to 0. Madam City Manager.
As a matter of public record, I wanted to make sure that we noted the fact that we do have a valid protest petition in regard to the rezoning, and if the council had acted on the item tonight, it would have taken a supermajority to overrule the Plan Commission's recommendation for denial. So I wanted to be sure that that was noted for the public record.
Could you have the dates to, to go back to plan so that people know?
This will go to Plan Commission December 9th and back to City Council December 21st.
Nice way to start the winter solstice, right? Okay. So we'll move on to citizens' participation. Okay. We have reached the point of the meeting for members of the public to speak to the council about issues that are coming before us or may come before us in the future. The council will not act on any requests this evening unless the item you are speaking about is already on our agenda, but we may act on a request at a future meeting or refer you to staff for assistance. We ask that you hold your comments three minutes or less. Does anybody wish to come forward and speak on something other than the COLAC matter? Please approach the podium and state your name and address if so. Second call for persons to come forward and speak under citizens' participation. Third and final call for persons to come forward and speak under citizens' participation. Hearing none, I'll close the, item 5, which is citizens' participation, and we will move on to the consent agenda, item 6. All items listed on the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless the council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered at this point on the agenda. I believe we have one that's going to need to be removed. Counselor Sloniker?
Item D.
All right. We'll move, remove item D. Does any counselor wish anything else removed from the consent agenda? Hearing none, the consent agenda will consist of items 6A through 6C, 6E, F, and G. Do I have a motion to approve the amended consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by DeForest, second by Hendricks. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Item passes by a vote of 5 to 0. And now Counselor Sloniker, I believe you're going to need to recuse.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. All right. We'll wait till Marilyn hops out of the, out of the room. All right. Item 6D.
Is an application for a conditional use permit to allow a religious institution in an R1B, Single Family Residential District for the property located at 1230 House Street.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve?
Right. A staff report, no?
Oh, is there a staff report in relationships this?
Yes.
Sorry. Okay. I guess we need to.
Sorry. That's what I'm here for. That's my job.
You can remind me. Yes, exactly. That's.
I'm sorry. I didn't know you wanted a staff report.
Okay.
This is, this is a conditional use, being referred to Plan Commission for religious institution in a single-family district.
Can we refer to plan now?
Right. It's a referral to, yeah, right. It's just for a referral to plan.
It'll be on the next Plan Commission agenda, which is Wednesday, and then it'll come back at your next meeting.
For full disclosure, of course, the reason Counselor Sloniker had to leave the room is that she's the applicant, so. All right. Do we have a motion to refer to plan?
Make that motion.
Moved by DeForest, second. Second by Hendricks. All in favor of referring this to plan, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It is referred to plan.
Make Andy's stand.
All right. Item 7A is.
Is a proposed ordinance to amend Section 15.06, Sub 3A and B of the Code of General Ordinances for the city of Beloit relating to alcohol possession and consumption but not sale of fermented malt beverage or wine.
Madam City Attorney.
This is just the second reading of the ordinance we had last time. Again, just for brevity's sake, this is just moving the responsibility for the beer permit from the Police Department to the Parks Department in an effort to make it a little more one-stop-shop kind of mentality for permit processing. We're not changing the way the permits are processed, just changing the location of them.
All right. Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
A second?
Moved by Kelly, second by DeForest. Anyone wishing, any counselors have comments or questions on this item? Hearing none, I'll call the matter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Item passes by a vote of 5 to 0. Item 8, we have appointments. I, the undersigned Charles Haynes, duly elected president of the Beloit City Council, subject to confirmation by the Beloit City Council, does hereby appoint the following citizen members to vacancies in terms indicated below. Said appointments being pursuant to nominations made and approved by the Appointment Review Committee at the regularly scheduled meeting held November 9th, 2015. The appointments we have are incumbents Alex Blazer and Ruth Vader to the Landmarks Commission, both for terms ending October 31st, 2018. Do we have a motion to approve the appointments?
I'll move approval.
Moved by DeForest, second by Hendricks. Any questions or comments on the appointments? Hearing none, I'll call the matter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The appointments are approved by a vote of 5 to 0. All right. And we have the following announcements, or following vacancies for these, for commissions. The Alcohol Beverage Licensing Control Commission has two vacancies for residents. The Appointment Review Committee has four vacancies for residents. The Board of Appeals has two vacancies alternate for residents. The Board of Ethics has one vacancy for former city councilor, five vacancies for residents. Board of Review has two vacancies for residents, two vacancies alternate for residents. Community Development Authority has three vacancies for residents. Equal Opportunity Commission has two vacancies for residents. Municipal Golf Committee has one vacancy for resident, one vacancy for youth representative. And the Parks and Recreation Conservation Advisory Commission has one vacancy for[1621.33] Equal Opportunity Commission has two vacancies for residents. Municipal Golf Committee has one vacancy for resident, one vacancy for youth representative. And the Parks and Recreation and Conservation Advisory Commission has one vacancy for youth Some of these commissions are absolutely essential to the operation of the city. They're absolutely critical. Alcohol licenses can't be issued without the ABLCC's agreement. People can't be appointed to commissions without the Appointment Review Committee. We're talking about, Community Development Authority has too many operations within our city. Some of these commissions are fairly low and have many vacancies. It is important that we have citizens step forward, and residents step forward, to assist us with governance of the city. If you have any interest at all in being, you know, participating, please do contact the City Manager's office with an application. All right, Item 9 is councillor activities and upcoming events. We'll start with Councilor Sloniker since she's terribly lonely over there.
I attended my regular meetings. Today was a meeting for upcoming planning on roads and what's going to be fixed in the future, so we had a two-hour presentation and thought process today, so that's all.
And, Councilor Hendricks.
Good evening. Welcome to all of our young people that are joining us today, whether by choice or by assignment. Either way, you'll be sure to learn a lot, and if you have any questions, feel free to contact any of us. We'll be more than happy to help you. On the personal side, or the councillor's side, my busy self, I've scraped some things off of my plate and have focused on rent, so I've been busy. We've done four shows already. My voice is not back up to par. Hopefully it will be by Thursday when we open again. Thursday, Friday, Saturday, if you have not seen the show at Beloit College, please come out and support. So much fun, a lot of good singing, a lot of good entertainment here in the city of Beloit, and we've heard good reviews so far, and it'll only get better. So come on out this weekend, Beloit College. Tickets are on sale, beloit.edu/theater, or you can purchase them from the box office Monday through Friday.
Thank you. All right, move down, Councilor Kelly.
Okay, so did I have notes? I want to go see Regina next Saturday, I think getting a group together to see her. And what have I done? I did not attend my regular meetings because I was out of town, but I did attend, part of the, because the Beloit had a press conference today, and they revealed their new website, which is not ready yet, but I guess it'll be ready this week, and they had their new book, so I guess you can go and pick it up downtown. And I also attended three out of the four BIF community meetings, so the Film Festival is presenting their plans for the next 10 years of BIF, including the affiliation with the Hollywood Film Festival, and they wanted, they were gathering the community to get feedback and input. I also attended the REACH Business Advisory Meeting, and REACH is the Career and Technical Education at the MHS, and the Business Department is discussing some really pretty cool, exciting stuff for business kids, where they can take classes, they might give them college credit, and they'll be able to get some certificates if they're interested in business, not just AP classes. I also went to the Chamber Ambassadors Meeting, which they had a joint meeting with the Chamber in Janesville, first time I've done that, and they had, we voted on grants, so the Chamber ambassadors collect money, and then they give out a grant, four grants every year, three or four grants, so we voted on those this week. And finally, I went to the, there was a meeting for the Diversity Ad-Hoc Workshop with the school district, and they had more, a chance to like put their plans and discuss it with the board, and they had some pretty radical ideas, and they're particularly concentrating in the areas of diversity hiring and retention through the school system, trying to bring the city in and bring the businesses in as they go out and recruit. And that's it. I did better today.
All right. And, Madam Vice President.
Thank you. To piggyback on what Anna was just talking about, Nora Gardis here in our audience, so nice to see you. Thank you, one of our school board members, and I am very excited and looking forward to collaborating and partnering with you on some of those Diversity Ad-Hoc Committee recommendations. The city certainly is willing to do that with you, and there are some really creative ways to consider how we can retain a diverse staff. The city certainly needs to work on that, the school district needs to work on that, so I appreciate your commitment and looking forward to that. That was a great meeting. I also attended the Community Leaders Breakfast, which is a wonderful opportunity to collaborate across municipalities. That's where the leaders from the Janesville City Council, Beloit City Council, and Rock County Board of Supervisors and Rock County Administrator get together, and we talk about common issues that are affecting our region, and of course, both the Beloit and Janesville City Managers as well. So that's a very important effort to really work together on these issues that we share. I do want to follow up on what President Haynes had shared, that there's so many youth here in the audience right now, some of you I know personally, and I really want to give a heartfelt encouragement for you to consider applying for one of those youth vacancies. I think you heard that there's a youth vacancy on the Golf Committee, and there's a youth vacancy on the Parks Recreation and Conservation Committee. I serve on that committee. I would be more than happy to come pick you up and take you to those committee meetings, and encourage you to be there, and give you the support you need to be there. The application process is very easy. It's literally a front and back, one-page piece of paper, and I can guarantee you, if you fill one out, you're pretty much going to be on the committee because we need you that badly. But this is an opportunity for you to really have a voice in what happens in our parks and in our recreation programs, so you get a really powerful way to have a voice on those committees. And it looks great on your resume, it looks great as you apply for college. We only meet once a month for about an hour and a half, but we really, we want youth voices at the table, so please, please, please consider doing it. You can go to the city website and download the app, so you can do that. You can get a paper app, there's a paper apps up there by the back door, so you can't help but leave out the door and see the applications there. And you certainly can call me. My phone number's on the city website, I'm in the phone book, I'm on White Pages on the web, you have no excuse. So please, please, please. And maybe if you're not interested, you know somebody who cares passionately about the parks or about golf. We really seriously want you there. I can't emphasize that enough, so I'll get off my soapbox now. But I want to make sure you know how serious we are about wanting your voice at the table, so thank you for that.
Thank you. And I don't have anything meaningful to add to that tonight. All right, so we'll move on to Item 10, City Manager's Presentation, Item 10A.
Is the Library Play and Read Grant received from the Department of Public Instruction?
I have a little visitor, hooray, but a cutie.
The library's hiring them younger and younger. Mr. President, council members, and City Manager Luther, I'm Nick Demassas, the Director of the Beloit Public Library. And as you know, our three focal areas of the Beloit Public Library are literacy, jobs and careers, and quality of life. And these are not ours by choice, but rather because they are aligned with all of the other public, private, nonprofit efforts going on across the city. And so tonight, we're going to talk about a program that we think is really special. We don't come down here every time to tell you about one of our programs and storytimes and things, so this one we really think, again, is special and really aligned. And as an example of that, I'll give you a little background before I turn it over to them to give you the details of the program. But it was in early August when the opportunity for this grant came to us, and we were looking it over and seeing what can we do and that. And it was at a meeting of the department heads, and City Manager Luther was talking very eloquently and movingly about focusing on two neighborhoods in the city in particular, the Merrill Neighborhood and the Hackett Neighborhood, and what the different departments, what the city can do moving forward to provide resources and services and that, and attention to these cities, other than law enforcement. And she turned, and she turned to me and challenged the library and said, you know, what is that you can do in terms of education, in terms of literacy? And so, again, this was, had just come across my desk, boy, have I got an idea, and then we went from there, and it's just, it's been fantastic, and those behind me right now have been working really, really hard, and moving this program along, and we're really seeing long-term possibilities for this, as you'll hear again in detail. They promised, they made me promise not to take all their information, but there's two sessions, and this first session is really building towards the second session, and the Department of Public Instruction is already planning on a continuation grant for next year, applying for that because of the success that they've seen so far. And so I'll turn it over to Jenny Schaumber, the Head of Youth Services, to talk about this.
Thank you, Nick, and thank you for having us this evening. I'm just going to let you know a little bit about the program. It is called Play and Read. It's an initiative that is a collaboration between AmeriCorps, Serv Wisconsin, the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction, and seven public libraries throughout the western and southern portions of the state. And those libraries include La Crosse, Richland Center, Janesville, Whitewater, Kenosha, Watertown, and of course, Beloit. Play and Read is supported in kind with funds from the Beloit Library Foundation, with staff time, and with other library resources. And it's a program that's made up of two 12-week playgroup sessions. Those sessions started in October of this year. We've had our AmeriCorps members since September, and the playgroups will run through April of 2016, although we do get to keep our AmeriCorps members through August of 2016. The playgroups are weekly, and they're a fun and free way, free way, for three- and four-year-olds in the Beloit community to learn reading skills through play. Children and their caregivers hear stories, play games, make crafts, sing songs, do a little dancing to get the wiggles out, and all of this is done in an effort to instill and support a lifelong love of learning and reading in kids. Kids receive plenty of one-on-one time during the playgroups, and caregivers receive take-home materials that enhance playing and reading at home. The Beloit Public Library does have four AmeriCorps members on staff. Kelly and Andrea were not able to be here this evening, but we do have Sheriann and Megan here this evening, and another guest star making her TV appearance, debut appearance. They'll be speaking this evening. And the members lead three weekly playgroups at the library. They participate in current library programming, and they attend outreach events in the community to promote the program. Currently, we have 19 kids that are signed up for the three different playgroups. Of those 19 kids, 15 of them are pretty regular attenders, and they bring along their moms, their dads, their grandmas, their grandpas, their siblings. So we have about 25 to 30 people that are part of the playgroup sessions. The AmeriCorps members also meet with families outside of the playgroups, at least twice during the 12-week sessions, and again, that's to encourage and promote literacy skills at home. So I will turn it over to Sheriann, who's going to let you know a little bit about what happens during the playgroups, and Megan, who will speak from a parent's perspective and also let you know about some of our outreach and recruiting efforts.
Thank you, Jenny. So my name is Sheriann, and primarily what I do for this program is help to plan and facilitate these playgroups that are going on in the library. So basically, in a playgroup, we start when we read some books. Just being read to increases children's vocabulary immensely, even if it's like the only bit of reading they do maybe is our playgroup session, it's still helping them along the way. It gets them talking. We ask questions about the books we're reading, and sort of show parents how to read to kids. It's not just like making them sit down and sit still, you know, you can get up and do the things in the books that we're reading, as well as singing songs, because kids need to move around a lot, they have short attention spans. So we do a lot of singing and dancing, and then we plan activities that help kids either learn fine motor skills or help with their letter recognition, things that they're going to be needing when they get to school. And also, there's a lot of younger siblings or younger kids that end up in our playgroups just because it's easier for families to kind of bring everyone with, and that also grants earlier exposure for these little kiddos. We've got quite a few two-year-olds who are doing the same activities as their older siblings in the, in the playgroups, and so it's really nice. And we've had lots of parents who are very excited to have their kids in these programs and who have noticed a difference in their kids' enthusiasm about reading and things like that, so...
Hi, thanks for having us tonight, and it is bedtime, so I will make this brief, but I could probably speak for hours and hours about the benefit I see as a parent and as an educator. I'm five years in, as a high school teacher at the school district of Beloit, currently on maternity leave for the year, thank you. And because I couldn't sit still while this fabulous reading program happened without me, I had to jump in and get involved. So I basically am here to talk to you about, my daughter Jana is three and a half, and I'm hopefully asleep right now, and she has been attending playgroup regularly since it began. She does do preschool, she has a mom who's a reading teacher, so she's very, already interested in books, but I've already seen just in three weeks, a huge difference, like she's telling me that there are exclamation points in her book now, and I was like, what? You know, and just, good, yes, I should teach you that, you know, and I just, I've already seen like a really great benefit to her, and so this is something I wanted to get involved with, to help spread sort of this membership of all of our Beloit childrens. So some of the things we've done for outreach so far, I've contacted like Little Turtles Daycare Center is possibly interested in having us come along and do like a once-a-week enrichment for their kids, because they see the value of adding to their programs, and I think it's my personal goal to get us into every daycare, I know that's a microphone, daycare center or home daycare, or just places where mom and dad, you know, which I couldn't have last year, couldn't have taken their kids, you know, to the library for these fabulous reading times. So we'd like to blossom and sort of stem from the library to make those home connections to all of our kids all over the city, and just make that as accessible as possible. We are, I'd like to also work with the school district of Beloit to see if we could work a bit with their 4K, and I know we have some fabulous school district initiatives I think this would work really well with, like our state model RTI program in literacy, for example. So yeah, I can't really understate how excited I am about this program and what a benefit I see for all of our Beloit kids, so that is where I will leave it. Thank you.
And one of the things too is that a lot of people, you know, the reading begins on the lap of a parent or a grandparent, and a lot of us know that, but there are a lot of, a lot of folks out there that haven't had that, haven't had that in their upbringing, haven't had that as part of, as part of the parenting, either that they experienced or whatever. And so this group brings the parents, the grandparents, the caregivers together with the child, and that's different than, you know, having, handing, having someone else try to do the teaching and that. It's keeping the caregiver and the child together, and then they take that, as has been described, they take that home and they take that, they take that with them elsewhere. So we really think the library owns that zero-to-four age range. It's a, it's a play, it's, we provide both the space and the materials for people to come into the library and have that interaction and start building those literacy skills, but also they can take those resources and they can take that knowledge home with them as well. So we're excited about this program, and again, this is the first session, and it'll be building towards a second session that starts in February, and then hopefully continue on next year and all through the year, and we'll be having these wonderful folks with us for, for at least a year now, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor, Counselor Kelly, you had a question?
I have a question. What date and time are these programs?
Right now, we have three different playgroups in session. They meet Monday from 1:00 to 2:00 p.m., Tuesday from 1:00 to 2:00 p.m., and Wednesday from 3:00 to 4:00 p.m. in the children's programming room. We still have seven weeks left of our first session, so encourage anyone to either stop in and check one out to see what we're all about, or all the information is online, you can call the circulation desk or the youth desk at the library. Everybody kind of knows about our program, so...
Thank you.
I have a question too.
There you go.
Are you already serving families that are Spanish-speaking, or do you at least have that capability, so that if we spread the word among Spanish-speaking families, they can attend?
I am fluent in Spanish.
Oh, perfect.
And we've tried to incorporate a bit of Spanish into our programs, and I'm also working with some library staff to start doing bilingual storytimes.
Fantastic, okay, thank you.
So I don't, we'll move on to Item 11, Reports from Boards and City Officers, Item 11A.
11A is a resolution approving the city policy for grant application, notification, and evaluation.
Chief.
Good evening, City Council, City Manager. I was asked at our department staff meeting to take on this project and revise this grant policy, grant administration policy. In December of 18th, 1995, the City of Beloit City Council adopted administrative policy to administer and provide oversight for grant programs where the City of Beloit was a benefactor and/or applicant. The policy provided for accountability and reporting through organizations with ultimate authority being vested in the City Council. This policy is nearly 20 years out of date, and the staff wanted to reaffirm this policy with a few minor changes. Things that we did, the policy has been reformatted to the current city policy design. The language has been reformatted to provide for efficiency and flow through the document. The policy now extends the ability for the city manager to authorize application when the timeliness for the application doesn't afford approval through the City Council. The grant evaluation procedures are revised to reflect the automated eGrant system. Most of our grants are applied for and work through a government eGrant system, so the grant accountability has increased dramatically with eGrant applications and reporting, so instead of having a city committee review the grant reporting and accountability, the accountability is now vested in the department head to report directly to the city manager and to the finance department, and to you if there is a problem. So this policy streamlines all of that, and looking for your support on the resolution so that we can enact this policy for future grant processes. Do you have any questions?
All right, thank you. We'll start by getting it on the table. Do we have a motion to approve? Moved by Sloniker.
A second.
Second by DeForest. Madam Vice President.
Thank you. I'm looking for the citation of the document, I haven't been able to put my hands on it right now, but from reading the packet, I remember there's an exception made for grants that tend to be renewable that we do each year. Could you talk a little bit more about that, the exceptions to this policy? Sorry, I can't find the exact citation.
Absolutely, there, it's actually, if you go to page 2, under item number D, exceptions for certain grants.
Thank you.
There are certain grants that the city gets annually that are actually passed downs from other government agencies, like Department of Transportation grants, grants for the transit system, grants that we would normally see for flood mitigation, anything like that, stuff that we would normally see on an annual basis in our budget, very similar to a grant that you're going to be seeing too, where we have a partnership with Walmart for Shop with Hero. So those grants can be included in the budget process, where they're presented as part of our budget line every year. We have an idea ahead of time of what those grant allocations and requests will be, and they're reoccurring grants. So those grants... So those grants will be presented as part of our budget line item, presentation and are, and be vetted through that process on an annual basis. That streamlines the process for us a little bit, so we don't have to do a budget amendment every time these routine grants occur. And these routine grants have actually been occurring on a regular basis for several years. It's just there was never anything in the policy to address it.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Do we have any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the matter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes by a vote of five to zero. Item 11B.
Is a resolution authorizing application and acceptance of a community grant from the Walmart Foundation for Shop with a Hero program and amending the 2015 general fund operating budget for this grant program.
Chief Liggett.
Chief Zabrowski and myself brought this forward. For the last 13 years, the Fire Department has participated and the Police Department have participated in this grant program, where there's been a pass-through grant previously administered, where it was passed through to the unions, and the unions expended those funds. Through accountability for the money and making sure that we're meeting all of our requirements of the auditors and GASB accounting rules, we need to make sure that this grant is approved by the city council and accounted for in the city books. So that drove us to bring this to your, for your approval this evening. This will become a reoccurring grant for future purposes. As long as the Walmart Foundation continues to fund it, we would not expend the funds unless funds were made available through the grant program. The Police Department, the Fire Department have received this non-competitive grant for 12 years. The Walmart Foundation provides funding for us to shop with needy children. Typically, in the past, we've get about a $25 gift card for each child that we shop with. There's a little, a small breakfast. We shop with these kids in uniform. If there's not enough money, usually it comes out of the pocket of the responder that's walking around with that kid to make their Christmas a little brighter. So that's what this grant program is about. There is no match. It's an annual program, and it certainly fits with our goals in providing opportunities for positive interaction with our children in the community. So I'd ask for your support this evening.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve? Moved by Hendrick, second by Slonaker, and Counselor DeForest.
Thank you. I have two questions. How are the children selected that participate?
Actually, Walmart does that part of it. We have, we have a certain amount of gift cards that the union will take and can pass out during emergencies. For instance, in this fall season, 25% of the cards responders can pass out when they've encountered a child on emergency. So we are connected that way. The rest of the folks are selected by Walmart Foundation.
Okay. You don't know how they select the children?
I do not.
Are they local children then?
Yes, all local children and all, all income-challenged.
Income-challenged, okay, that's good. And then I hate to ask, but I feel like I should. Is, are the officers and the paramedics, are they doing this on staff time or off of staff time?
It's all volunteer.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any other questions or comments by counselors? Hearing none, I'll call the matter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes five to zero. Item 11C.
Is a resolution amending the 2015 capital improvement budget for the purchase of self-contained breathing apparatus equipment for technical rescue.
Chief Liggett.
2015, the Fire Department purchased our self-contained breathing apparatus from our CIP budget. This was a project that was funded over two years, the 14 and 15 budget. We're not able to complete the project in its entirety with the funds originally appropriated. Our bids came in a little bit higher than we anticipated. We need an additional $21,000 to finish the project. The old SCBA units were collected and sent to do two different companies for resale. Those companies have sold those, and we're, we have proceeds in-house right now of $10,114 with an additional $5,900 expected in the next two weeks from another vendor. We are also allocating $1,764 from other unexpected CIP projects, and then $3,236 of fund balance from the Capital Improvements Fund to help us complete the project. There's no new borrowing for this. This proceeds from the sale of our old equipment and then leftover funds from other projects. The, the, what we plan to purchase with this is 1,200 feet of airline umbilical. If you can picture a firefighter that has to go into a tunnel or confined space or a collapsed building, there's not a lot of room for a big air tank. So when we go into those situations, we go into those situations with an airline. That airline is subject to abrasion by the walls of the tunnel that we're in or the debris that we're crawling in, and can be very complicated rescue. So what we're doing is buying this particular umbilical cord that will protect all of those airlines from damage. Also, we're getting communication line. If you can imagine, we're underground in a tunnel somewhere, you can't communicate out with a radio, so we have to have, have to be able to communicate with that line. This also gives us two low-pressure bottles, two Pelican cases, and air regulators to supply those folks in the tunnel. 1,200 feet, why do we need 1,200 feet? We need 400 feet for each rescuer. There needs to be two rescuers in the hole, and there needs to be two rescuers prepared to rescue those rescuers in the event of an emergency for those folks. So that's when we need 1,200 feet. The total value of that purchase would be about $21,000. This will allow us to be compliant with all of the NFPA standards and get us up to speed when, for those types of rescues. Any questions?
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve? Moved by Slonaker.
Second.
Second by Kelly. Counselor DeForest.
Thank you. So just to be clear, because we already purchased the self-contained breathing apparatus with the previous CIP, but now we just need to purchase the supporting equipment to go with those. Is that correct? The line and the Pelican cases and the...
Yeah, we were, we were able to purchase everything that we needed for firefighting. We have all the facepieces, the air tanks, the personal alert safety devices, the heads-up displays, everything that, all of the buddy breathing equipment that we need to rescue a firefighter, all of the rapid intervention team packs that we would use to rescue firefighters that are trapped. So we have all of that basic equipment. And we also have, with that equipment, a new requirement for, to have pack locators. So there is a GPS device on each pack. It will sound off, and we have a location device that will help us rapidly locate those firefighters in a trapped building. So that, that equipment is all in place. What we needed, what was left to purchase was the, the, this umbilical line, information stuff that we needed for the technical rescue team.
So that we'd have best practice, right?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Kelly.
So it doesn't sound like you're asking for any money, you're just allocating the money. Is that, am I getting that right?
Yeah, that's correct. Yes, this is no new money.
Yeah.
We, we, we have the money coming in, so, and we have to make the expenditure. The original expenditure, if you look at the resolution, it kind of details the, the original expenditure was for $200,000. We're additionally, expending an additional $21,000, so that has to be approved by the city council. We have to amend the budget to do that.
Madam City Manager.
Right, so exactly as the chief has stated, to be clear, that we're not expending an additional, we are expending an additional $21,000, which requires the amendment. But those funds have been selected from the three sources that you see outlined in the resolution. So we have two other projects that came in under cost, so we're reallocating those to this particular project and a very small portion from the capital project fund balance. So this is an effort to make sure that we're keeping up with the bookkeeping on our end, that you're formally approving any changes to the budget such, such as this. But the additional funds have already been identified for you, and we've addressed that $21,000 difference.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, do we have any other questions or comments from counselors? Hearing none, I'll call the matter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes by a vote of five to zero. What remains is Item 12 as adjournment. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Um, sorry.
Moved by, by popular acclamation almost. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.